Good evening, welcome to the Costa Mesa Planning Commission meeting for Monday, May 9th, 2022. I call the meeting to order and ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands on a nation and God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Anna, roll call, please.
Chair Diarco.
Here.
Vice Chair Zick.
Here.
Commissioner Rojas.
Here.
Commissioner Toller.
Here.
Commissioner Russell.
Here.
Commissioner Vivar.
Present.
Commissioner Erith is absent.
Okay, thank you very much, Anna. We have no announcements or presentations tonight. That brings us to public comment. This is the portion of the meeting where members of the community can address the Planning Commission on items within its purview but that are not on tonight's agenda. So if there's anyone in the community in chambers or on Zoom or telephone, please come forward. Seeing no one in chambers, Anna, do we have anybody on Zoom or phone?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll close public comment. Brings us to Commissioner Comment, and we'll begin this evening with Commissioner Rojas. Any comments?
I have no comments, Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Toller.
Not tonight, thank you, Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Russell.
I don't have anything tonight either, thank you.
All right, how about you, Commissioner Vivar?
Um, not tonight, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, Vice Chair Zick.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
All right, and I have none as well. That brings us to the Consent Calendar. All matters listed under the Consent Calendar are considered to be routine, will be acted upon in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the Planning Commission staff or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the Consent Calendar for discussion. The public can make this request via email and should include the item number to be addressed. Items removed from the Consent Calendar will be discussed and voted upon immediately following Planning Commission action on the remainder of the Consent Calendar. We have one item on the Consent Calendar tonight, which is capital improvement budget for general plan conformity. Anna, do we have anybody from the public wishes to pull the item?
Yes, we do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioners, any of the other Commissioners wish to? I mean, it's already being pulled, so, all right. So, Anna, go ahead and read that item into the record. There are no other items on the Consent Calendar.
Consent Calendar, item number one, General Plan Conformity Resolution for the City of Costa Mesa, one-year fiscal year 2022 to 2023 and five-year fiscal year 2022 to 2027 Capital Improvement Program. Please note, this item was pulled by a member of the public for comment.
Okay, and staff, who are we going to have present that tonight? And I'm sorry, Anna, for the record, who is the member of the public wishing to request the item to be pulled?
Cynthia McDonald.
Okay, and Ms. McDonald is with us, I imagine? Okay, very good. Staff, who's going to?
Chair this evening, our Public Services Director, Rajah Setharaman, and his staff will be presenting this item.
Very good. Mr. Setharaman, good to see you as always. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Chair Diarco. So, we have a presentation that we can make and then follow up with any questions you may have or members of the public may have.
Very good.
So with me, I just want to point out, we have a good contingent of staff from Public Services. We have our city engineer, Sung Yang. We have our transportation services manager, Jennifer Rosales, and we have our active transportation coordinator, Bretta Tensio Thomas. So with that, so the CIP is one of the most important items in our budget, and it's the most important work function for Public Services Department. And it by no means the only function. As you may know, we deal with so many other things than just the CIP. And I would think this is maybe a good 30%, 35% of our workload is CIP. So, just a quick overview on the CIP. It's financed from a multiple of funding sources. We have, of course, our city's general fund, but we also have federal, state, county funds that go towards the CIP. And some of these funds have restrictions. For example, if there are monies from park fees, they can be used in parks projects. If it's gas tax-related funds from state, then it can be used only on public right-of-way, whether streets or alleys and such. And some of those are federal projects, like we have CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Funds. So, depending on what type of funds, we have to follow certain procedures, certain rules to use them, to use the funds, to provide justification and to get monies from these various agencies. So, it does involve multiple levels of oversight. So, we have to provide documentation to OCTA, to federal, on how these funds are used. And all these are allowed, are subject to audit. And we also have coordination with, as you might expect, from various departments because the CIP covers a wide range of improvements that span all the departments. And we work with our city attorney's office on the contracts and such. So, to be qualified as a CIP, the Costa Mesa City has a council established a threshold of $30,000. So, if a project is below $30,000, and this is design-construction included, then it comes under, we group them under building modification projects. So, you see a line item for building modification, but it's a group of smaller projects is what that is. So, unlike the rest of the general fund, the operating budget, the CIP is a multi-year program. So, the CIP funds can be carried over from one year to another year. And that's because most of these projects are that kind of category. For example, we started design on Fire Station Number Two. That's going to take us a couple of years to get through the design, a year to get through the design, then we have to advertise and award, and then it takes a couple of years for construction to happen. So, it's not feasible for someone to program a project like that in one year and say you have to finish it in one year. So, it takes multiple years. And they go, and as I mentioned, they go through distinct phases. So, sometimes we go through conceptual planning, then we go through the actual design, then the bidding, and then the selection, and then the construction phase, and then the project closeout is the last phase. So, for the 2022-23 CIP, it's quite comprehensive and it's robust. And a few years ago, the city established this CAN ordinance, Capital Asset Needs Ordinance, that says we had to spend at least 5% of our general fund towards CIPs. And we are exceeding that by quite a bit in this go-around. And how we identify these projects, they're based on established city council priorities. We conduct a goal-setting session every six months, and we, you know, council gives us what their priorities are for the next few years, the next few months, and then we use that as our basis for determining the CIP list. We, of course, get input from various commissions, your, this commission and also Parks and Recreation Commission, and we have various committees that give us information on projects to be included, and we hear from the community also. And then we have departments, individual departments have needs that we solicit in December of every year, what needs to be done in your section for the next year. So, they give us their list of projects. And we have our own evaluation of all the facilities, too. So, we know some places their conditioning is not working or a roof needs replacement. Our maintenance identifies that, and we put them also in the list. So, based on that, we put together a CIP, and that's totaling $25.3 million. And the bulk of the money is coming from our capital improvement fund, which is the general fund. $11.3 million is coming from that. And as I mentioned, our 5% threshold is in the range of $7 to $7.5 million. So, we're exceeding that by quite a bit in this year's budget. Then we got gas tax from two different sources. We got Measure M2, that's from Orange County, OCTA. That's the guaranteed amount that we get almost every year. And then we're using about $1.2 million from Traffic Impact Fee Fund, and we have Golf Course Improvement Fund. Again, this is a restricted fund for golf course only. And then drainage fees that we collect, you know, from various developments. And then CDBG is Community Development Block Grants. This is a federal money. AQMD provides some funds every year for us. And then other grant funds. And bulk of this grant fund that you have here is from actually our Assemblywoman, Kadi Petri Norris, got us about $2.5 million for Fire Station Four. So, here is another chart that shows how the funds are distributed among different projects. So, you can see streets and facilities are getting a big chunk of these funds. Other transportation improvements, about $3 million, and parks, parkways, and then energy sustainability projects together are getting about $3.5 million. So, in total, we have 42 projects in our CIP. As I mentioned, it's $25 million and $11 million from the general fund. And the next sheet, a little hard to read, you have this in your attachment, so we can go through them if you have any questions on any individual projects. But what we want to do is highlight some of the key projects. We are not going to go through all 42, but we'll go through just a few projects here. With that, let me have Sung make this one.
Thank you, Mr. Setharaman. So, once again, I'm Sung Yang, your city engineer. So, I'd like to go over some of the proposed fiscal 2022-23 CIP projects, and one of which is the Fire Station Number Four Training Tower and Grounds Reconstruction. For this particular project, the Fire Department received a $2.5 million grant funding for the reconstruction of the old fire training tower and the improvements that come with it for the surrounding grounds and area around Fire Station Number Four. These improvements include upgrading the interior living quarters and other upgrades, which include Americans with Disability Act or EDA accessibility requirements, upgrades to multi-gender accommodations, and also improved living quarters within Fire Station Number Four. The next project to discuss is the Police Department Range Remodel and Upgrades. This particular project is to upgrade the range, which is now in not-so-good condition. And this project is going to be responsible for firearms training, 136 warrant officers, four reserve officers, and six Fire Department arson investigators that this range serves. For this project, design and permit approvals for police range and remodel upgrades have been completed. And also, this project will account for accessibility improvements that will be implemented per our current building codes. We expect construction to begin early next summer, and this project has already been advertised.
Just want to point out on this.
Go ahead.
Just want to point out on this one project. This was previously approved with funding in the previous fiscal year. However, when we were going through the building plan check process, additional ADA improvements were identified, including replacing the elevator that's in the, in Police Department. So, this funding is, is in addition to what we already have previously budgeted.
Thank you. So, moving on, the next project up for discussion is the citywide street and alley improvement projects. These are our annual projects that we do every year in our CIP. And for the major streets citywide, we improve, include Wilson Street from Newport Boulevard to Placentia Avenue, Sunflower Avenue from Fairview Road to Bear Street, and also includes the various residential streets in our city as well. In addition, the citywide alley improvement projects will be, the citywide alleys will be reconstructed from the current asphalt pavement to new fiber-reinforced concrete services, which are known to last very many years, up to 50 to 75 years in advance. Next project's the Adams Avenue Improvement Project. This particular project is to, is from Royal Palm Drive to the Santa Ana River, and it will undergo pavement rehabilitation and parkway concrete improvements. It's going to be funded through the Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account, or RMRA funds, which is a form of gas tax. There will be buffered bicycle lanes, and it will be implemented as an interim project. They'll be adhering to the Active Transportation Plan, new signing and striping. Just kind of let the commission know that the utility pole undergrounding is planned for a future upcoming project and won't be incorporated for this project. So, this project is to improve the current street because it's in poor condition, but for the utility pole undergrounding, it's scheduled for, as a future project. Thank you. So, I'll defer back to Mr. Setharaman for the next set of slides.
So, Ketchum Leibold Park is, again, off of Victoria Street, and there is a plan to expand this park by using some of the existing landscape area on Victoria Street. So, we'll move the park boundary from where it is and a few more feet out, so to provide a larger facility. This will make room for additional playground, extra landscaping, and of course, the turf area. And also, there will be additional elements that will contribute to the expanded park. So, there were some outreach already done for this expansion, and so we'll be now going through design and construction. Shalimar Park, in, Shalimar Park, again, in the West Side neighborhood, it needs enhancements as well as additional park space. So, we'll be holding committee outreach meetings to get idea for short-term as well as long-term needs for this park. Short-term improvements will include replacing the playground surfacing with more rubberized surface instead of bark that's out there, and new equipment. In future, there may be plans for securing additional property adjacent to this site so we can expand the park. Brentwood Park had a master plan a few years ago. However, this project is limited in scope, and this will include, again, upgraded playground equipment, landscaping, more trees, and ADA walkways and other facilities. With that, I'll have Jennifer Rosales talk about this one.
Great. The next project is the Fairview Road Improvement Project, which will improve pedestrian and bicycle facilities from Newport Boulevard to Fair Drive. This project also includes pavement rehabilitation and parkway concrete improvements. The project includes improving the bicycle facilities by design and implementation of Class IV cycle tracks, which is identified in the city's Active Transportation Plan. The project will also include extensive public outreach, traffic analysis, and coordination with OCTA. I will now hand it to Bretta Tensio Thomas, city's Active Transportation Coordinator.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales, and Honorable Chair and Vice Chair and Commissioners. It's absolute pleasure to meet you all. Very happy to be joining the city as the Active Transportation Coordinator. And, you know, one thing you'll notice throughout this presentation is there's a bit of active transportation sprinkled in across the entire, a lot of the capital improvements happening in the city. Specifically, there are over $3 million in the capital improvement projects right now for bicycle and pedestrian improvements and encouragement programs, really not just to build the infrastructure, but also to provide opportunities for people to get out there and really encourage them to use that infrastructure. Some of that includes a bicycle safety education program at our 16 schools in the city within the Newport Mesa Unified School District, as well as continued expansion of bicycle parking facilities. You might be noticing that happening across the city, and that's a really important component of a robust bicycle infrastructure network, because you have to have somewhere to park your bicycle once you get to your destination. Some of the other stuff we have working is in the Class II, III, and IV. So, just a quick, like, brief background on that. Class II is a normal striped bicycle lane, like you see out here on Fair Drive or on Fairview Road. Class III is like a bicycle boulevard or sharrows on the back of a street. And then also, Class IV is separated bikeways, similar to what you may have seen recently implemented on Merrimack Way as well as Bristol Street. So, we do have continued development of those projects. Upcoming, some of the Class II, III, and IV projects we have in the list this year are Placentia Avenue as well as Delmar Avenue. And then we're continuing to expand citywide neighborhood traffic calming, really providing safer spaces for people to walk and to ride a bicycle. And as was mentioned, we do have some major upcoming projects in the pipeline now, and that's Adams Avenue, Active Transportation Improvements, which were previously mentioned, as well as some really, really great improvements coming to Fairview here in the College Park area.
A few other projects that are not specifically listed in the CIP, but as part of our operating budget would be the Climate Action Adaptation Plan. This is a project to, we have an RFP that's pretty much ready to get this plan developed. Residential Permit Parking Study Implementation and 2023 Open Streets Event. With that, so the Climate Action Adaptation Plan, it's its first comprehensive study to address climate change, and this will be led by our Energy Sustainability Manager, Salama Fawarki. And it also includes greenhouse gas inventory, emissions reduction targets, climate vulnerability assessment, and adaptation strategies. So, we'll be coming back to city council and the commissions to get more feedback on this as the study progresses. And definitely, committee engagement is very crucial for that particular effort. Permit Parking Study?
Yes. The Residential Permit Parking Study was completed and presented to city council in a study session in November, and then again earlier this month in May. In May, at the city council meeting, city council did approve the proposed new guidelines for residential permit parking. So, this project will provide implementation of a new residential permit parking program. This project includes setting up an automated permit management system, includes the purchase and procurement of license plate recognition equipment, extensive marketing outreach campaign, materials branding, new signage, and the goal of the project was aimed at providing equitable access, sustainable parking solutions, and efficient program management. Bretta Tensio will talk about a 2023 Open Streets Event.
Yeah, this is a really exciting, again, back to the safety and encouragement programs, this is a really exciting version of that. And really, what this does is it temporarily closes a street to motorized traffic and opens it up to people walking, bicycling, and using other forms of non-motorized traffic or mobility. And the goal of Open Streets is really threefold. The first goal is to provide that opportunity to get out there on a bicycle on a city street where you may not have had that opportunity previously. You may only ride on the beach bike paths or things of this sort and never really ridden a bicycle in your own community. So, we provide that opportunity. The second goal of programs like this are to take that one time of getting out there on your city street and riding a bicycle, and hopefully encourage you to use a bicycle for future trips. That's to say, you went out there and you rode your bike for eight or nine miles at this open street event, and maybe next time you go to the grocery store instead of driving, you'll take your bike because you realize it's really easy to do. And then third is to foster that civic engagement at the local level that's encouraging of bicycling and walking as a form of mobility. And with that, I'll hand it back over.
Some other information we want to share is, as I mentioned, CIPs are multi-year events, and, you know, these 42 projects are not the only ones we'll be working on. We have quite a long list of projects that are in attachment tree that we will continue to put our efforts in to make sure that they are also completed. And just want to point out, while the list is long, many of these projects are completed or in progress, so it's not that we will have a super-heavy workload with this new addition of projects. Just some of these quick projects are, you know, as I mentioned, we started design of Station Number Two, that's going on. We're working on improvements to Newport Boulevard. That's almost at, you know, 35% stage complete. West Side Restoration Project, there are multiple projects on this one that are happening, focused on West 19th Street. We want to design a training room for city, in the city hall. We don't have one, we used to, and it got taken up by AV equipment next door, so now we're looking for a new training room in the basement. And then some of the others that were mentioned earlier, Placentia Avenue, Active Transportation Improvements, I'll talk about Mesa Delmar in the next couple of slides. So, with that, so Placentia Avenue, we have a rehab project that does take it from Adams to Wilson Street and from 18th Street to South City Limits. So, what we want to do is to expand the limits of this project by including the rest of Placentia Avenue also between Wilson and 18th, and make it a one continuous project where we not only do steady seal rehab, but we also look at opportunities to widen the bike lanes that we have on Placentia Avenue. You might be seeing similar improvements as Bristol on locations where we have the room to do so. If not, there will be at least widened bike lanes. This project will be implemented in summer of 2022. The design is almost done, and we'll be sharing that shortly. Mesa Delmar Circulation Improvements, this is in the community of Mesa Delmar. We are looking at improvements on Valencia and Mission Drive. There were some ideas that were brought up many, many years ago, but this will be going through committee outreach and figuring out what that committee needs on those two streets. And this is to improve parking as well as circulation. And then we are looking at pedestrian bicycle improvements on Junipero and traffic calming improvements on Arlington Drive.
Mr. Setharaman, could I interrupt you real quickly on, and I appreciate you on the, on the traffic calming measures that you're looking at? Just, and this is, this isn't something that, you know, something to look at maybe down the line or to continue to monitor, but I'm very concerned about Presidio, which is a drag strip, and it's very long and very straight, and the speeds I see there are frightening. And this isn't, this isn't because I live on Drake, but Drake is the same way. It does have a bend in it, but people scream down that street, and there's a lot of families on it. So, I know St. Clair has some speed bumps, I know, I think Camino has, what's that street?
El Camino Drive, yes.
You know, and I know it takes a warrants analysis and you have to look at it, but those streets are getting increasingly dangerous just from a speed perspective and what I see. So, that's just expressing my concern as you bring that topic up.
Yes, Chair Diarco, we'll take a look at those. And I know, I know Ms. Rosales already looked at Drake before, but we'll take a look at it. So, there are bicycle facilities that are being considered for Mesa Drive, Santa Ana Avenue, and Mesaody Drive, Peterson Place. T-Winkle Park has a couple of projects, one for the skate park, potential expansion for the skate park, and the other one is for the lakes. The lakes are having some issues with water seepage. It's, it needs to be, the bottom of the lake has to be redone, so we are working through design on that project. And then we also have a five-year CIP that's included in your document, in your staff report. Now, the, this is a five-year plan, it's more for planning purposes based on, you know, it's kind of what we see at this time, but just want to let you know that things do change, and some new priorities might get in and change that list. So, as we get to next year, we'll, we'll see what makes the list next year. So, the action before you is to find that the general, that the CIP is, you know, it meets the intent of the general plan, and they are in conformance, and it's not subject to further CQ review, because most of these are already part of general plan in one way or other. So, staff's request, your approval. So, here is the calendar. Today, we are on, you know, at your presentation. There is a presentation tomorrow at study session, but that's more focused on the operating budget. And then we'll have a presentation to Finance and Pension Advisory Committee, followed by Parks, Arts, and Committee Services Commission, and then we head back to city council for formal adoption in June. With that, we are available for any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you very much, team. You all did excellent, thank you very much. As usual, Mr. Setharaman brings the top-shelf talent into the meeting, which I always which I always appreciate, the expertise. So Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Vivar, and then we'll go Commissioner Toler, and then Vice Chair Zick.
All right, thank you, Chair. Thank you, city staff, for your presentation. And Bretta Tensio, welcome to the Planning Commission meetings. Thank you for your involvement as well with the city's active transportation programs. So regarding the transportation projects, were all of those able to be looked at by the Active Transportation Committee for their comments?
So the, the projects, we did discuss these projects with the Active Transportation Committee. Actually, we started talking to them back in, I think, February. So, so these are, yeah, these are consistent with what, what the committee also is looking for in terms of projects to be implemented.
Is the 19th Street project included in this CIP as well? I know that there is talk about the signal at 19th and Wallace. Is that a part of this as well?
Commissioner Vivar, 19th Street project is already funded. And the 19th at Wallace is also funded, so those are in the works right now. We hope to advertise those projects shortly.
So the design was funded, but the, oh, the construction is funded?
Yes.
Oh, okay, great, okay, that's, that's great. Regarding Wilson Street, I know that that's, that's been another street that the Active Transportation Committee has expressed many concerns about regarding speeding and safety. And so are there projects that, in this CIP, that are seeking to address some of the speeding problems there, safety, active transportation safety concerns along Wilson?
So Commissioner, I just want to point one thing, and Chair also, that, I want to apologize, one of the slides that Wilson Street, we said it's from Newport to Placentia. That's actually already being, it was advertised and awarded by City Council. So the project on this, on the next year would be from Placentia to the West City Limits. So, which means most of, most of Wilson will be improved with that project. And, and for, to address the issues of, yeah, we did hear about concerns, especially between College and Fairview with kids crossing and the speeding on Wilson. And we are looking at narrowing the lanes on Wilson Street, adding bulbouts at multiple locations. And there is a new crosswalk with a signal, Hawk Signal, that's going to be installed at Wilson Park. So multiple improvements are taking place. And then you also will see quite a few active transportation improvements in terms of sharrows and bike lanes where feasible. As you know, Wilson Street is, it's not at its ultimate width. It's, we are taking whatever is the right of way that we have available right now and fitting in the most improvements we can within those limits.
Because I think, as I understand, Wilson Street also has OCTA considerations that we have to look at right for the buses?
That's correct.
Okay, yeah, so where, you said bike lanes would be installed where feasible. Would that be protected bike lanes?
We don't have room for protected bike lanes on Wilson Street, yeah.
Yeah, I also wanted to comment on the Open Streets event. I think that's an awesome idea. As far as I know, we, as a city, haven't had a big active, or a big Open Streets event. And I know there's been sort of smaller ones I've seen throughout the years in residential streets, but does the city have maybe plans for maybe how big of an event that might be? Or what, like what we might have at the event as a, as a city? Or like what we might expect to see there?
Commissioner, at this point, we don't have a specific route or the length of it. So that's part of the planning process.
Okay, okay, yeah, I mean, that's great. It's, I think it's exciting that we're working on that. I'm excited to see the Open Streets event. And then regarding the seepage you mentioned, that the lakes in Fairview Park, so do you mean the, sort of the ground of those? Because I understand they're like retention ponds, so the, or settling ponds, so the water has been leaking into the ground. And like, what are some of the issues that have come of that? And what, what are the potential mitigations that you guys are looking at?
Commissioner, it's not Fairview Park, it's T. Winkle Lakes.
Oh, T. Winkle, oh, sorry, whoops. But what are some of the things that are being looked at there? Is that, because I know, I remember years ago when the whole lake was sort of drained, and it was, you know, redone and whatnot. So would it be a big project like that, and just sealing up the bottom again with concrete? Or?
So Commissioner Vivar, it will be looking at the lining of the lake underneath. It won't be concrete, we, you know, we'll be looking at, you know, that's a designer is working on it and giving us a recommendation. We'll actually be going to Parks Commission pretty soon to share the existing conditions report and some preliminary thoughts on the, on the, on the, on the project. So at this point, I don't have the details of what the mitigations will be, but it'll be multiple recommendations.
Right, I'm, I'm not a geotechnical engineer, but I, I mean, I kind of understand the, yeah, seepage could be an issue, but sometimes seepage, or maybe, I guess, controlled seepage could be a good thing to recharge the water tables. I'm not sure if any of that would be looked at as part of this project.
So Commissioner Vivar, it's not, it's not that water comes back, you know, some other way. We have to add water that's lost. So it's, it's leaking into underground, but then it's not, then, you know, we have to add new water to keep the lakes going. So, so there is loss of water.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. All right, yeah, thank you, Mr. Seth Raman, for the great presentation for being here tonight. And, Mr. Chairman, I think that's it for me, thank you.
Commissioner Toler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, staff, for everybody being here and for that presentation and for this helpful staff report. I will save my comments for later, but in terms of questions, I'll just pick the easy one out of this whole improvement program. There's one that I think sticks out way more than all the other ones. If you look at the five-year program for all of these, you see a lot that are recurring. Every year, we invest $100,000 in citywide energy efficiency projects, or installing electric vehicle facilities, or city hall improvements, things like that. If you get to number 127, and you look at that one, it's not a couple hundred thousand dollars a year. It's citywide street improvements at $5,500,000 consistently, and it keeps growing every year, so that it's $35 million in the total, which absolutely dwarfs everything else in this whole program. So I was hoping you could help us understand why that one's so big, and if it's comparable to other cities, and if there's, yeah, just help shed some light on that big one.
Sure, thank you, Commissioner Toler, for noticing that. So as I mentioned, we have some funds that are restricted, that they can't be used for anything other than the intended purpose that was set by, by state or other agencies. So every year, we get almost $6 million, maybe a little bit more, between gas tax, the two gas tax sources, RMRA and, and the regular gas tax, and Measure M2, fair share. And they can be only used on public right-of-way projects. And, you know, if you notice how we are implementing a lot of those projects, one is we definitely have to take care of the roadway surface. And, and that is to make sure that they are at a reasonable quality. Because if you don't maintain it and, and use those funds towards keeping it at a, at a good threshold, they deteriorate to a point where we have to spend a lot more to fix streets, and we won't have money to do anything else. But what we're able to do, because of our roads are in decent shape, we're able to extend that money for other improvements, like active transportation. So if you notice, when we did Bear Street bike lanes, that was not part of the plan before. When we did Bristol Street bike lanes, that wasn't part of the plan. We were able to use the same funding that's used for the road project and said, okay, let's do a change order, let's do whatever, use the same monies to do these two projects. And same thing happened with, with Merrimack. A lot of the Merrimack, while it grant-funded a portion of the bike project, we used our road monies also to kind of improve that. Fairview Road, same way, between, between Adams and Baker. All the improvements that you see partly grant, but quite a bit came from our, these sources. So, so we're able to use our roadway project monies that are from gas tax and all that. And we're doing not just road maintenance, but we're also doing active transportation improvements.
So I wish, as I was looking at this on my computer, I could hover over each line and get a little summary of each one. But I, what I think I understand you saying is that this is kind of a bucket that can be used in a number of ways. It's just one line item that could be used for pavement rehab or other things that come up that are identified in here. For pavement rehab, I know that's a big part of it. And I see a lot of Teslas on the road, and I know that they're heavier than other cars. And I know SUVs are getting bigger and bigger. And the volume on our roadways is increasing. And I wonder if that is causing our lifespan of our pavement to decrease, and whether we have any, whether that's the reason that these are in, these numbers are increasing year over year? Because I know they're not adjusted for inflation. Is, is that part of it? Do we factor those things in?
So Commissioner Toler, so we did not notice that our pavement is getting worse because of any of those reasons. We designed it based on the condition of the roadway and the traffic volumes. And, you know, in the last many, many years that I've been seeing traffic numbers, we don't increase our traffic numbers significantly at all. In fact, I happen to see some streets that the numbers from 10, 15 years ago are identical to what they are now. I mean, our city doesn't, it didn't grow population-wise, you know, we were not like 50,000 15 years ago, and we are now 113,000. We were probably 112,000 10 years ago, and we're same, almost same numbers even now. And so I don't anticipate, it's not going up because of that. Sometimes the funding itself goes up because, just like our tax numbers go up, the tax money we get from gas tax, and they also go up too. So, and state government bypassing the SB 1 provided additional funds for roadway maintenance and rehabilitation account. So, so it's, it's because of those fundings that, that we are seeing that, that increase. But as I mentioned now, the, the project costs are higher because we are now adding active transportation elements to the project. Let's say in, in five years from now, we rehab Bristol Street down the road because the pavement needs slurry again. We have to go back and put back $125,000 of active transportation improvements onto that in addition to just a slurry seal, you know, which could be, let's say, $150,000. But the actual cost is going to be higher because now it's not only slurry seal, we have to put back all the bollards and all the green paint that gets slurry sealed over. So, so we need to make sure that we fund for all those extra. Even, you know, because it's not a one-time thing. You do these projects, active transportation, and you forget about them. We have to come back and redo them. Merrimack has to get redone in, I'm thinking, five to 10 years, we might redo the whole of Merrimack project. Not the medians, but at least these bollards and the paint, all that has to be refreshed. A good example is if we go down on Arlington Drive, we did that bike trail on Arlington, and we did some green paint on all the driveways. You can see those are already fading, so we had to go back and refresh them. So, so this money goes for all of these things.
Thank you, those are all my questions.
Okay, Vice Chair Zick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this isn't a project review, it's a general plan conformity review. But you talked about one project, and it raised a question in my mind. And it was the Adams Avenue project. And the, the reason why a question was raised is because when we've used the term Adams Avenue project, it conjures up an assortment of improvements that were discussed, evaluated, prioritized in numerous public meetings. But in your description of the project now, it sounds like it is kind of a scaled-down, significantly scaled-down project. Not just the utilities no longer being undergrounded, which is what was contemplated. But it also sounds like the right-of-way profile is not at all what was discussed with the public. So Class 4 bike lanes aren't part of it. So I guess what I'm asking you, or I'm just commenting, that to use the same name for what is really a different project might, might confuse people that are familiar with an expectation of what this project involves. So that's a comment, you don't have to respond if you don't want to.
Actually, I can respond to that. Actually, it's a, it's a good point that you're making, and I want to clarify. So this is, we, our intention is to go, to go through that larger project that we shared with the community in two or three meetings that we had with the community. And then they picked a project that would have Class 1 type of bike facilities on Adams with all the landscaping, undergrounding everything. And when we actually started the process of working with Southern Conference Edison on undergrounding Adams Avenue, and City Council already approved us to proceed with that project. But what we are finding out is the undergrounding project, it's in design right now. And Edison is going to take a year and a half or go through the design. Then they work with other utilities to go through their plans, and then go through the undergrounding process. And it sounds like it's going to take us three to four years to, to get us to that point. What we are finding is Adams Avenue, if you have driven on Adams, it's, it's in a pretty bad shape, and it needs immediate some, some work. So what we intend to do is to go through a pavement rehabilitation project now and implement the, you know, we have three different options for Adams. Implement option one of that, which is, we do, it'll be buffered bike lanes on Adams. So we'll implement that project along with the pavement rehabilitation. So we have something to start with. And then, once the undergrounding is completed, then we proceed and complete the rest of the project, the full limits.
Is the sidewalk from Mesa Verde West to Mesa Verde East part of your new project scope?
So, so because that's the undergrounding, that's the area that has to be undergrounded. So we cannot be doing anything in that location.
Okay.
So, so Edison is going to come through right after we finish our payment project, maybe in about two years' timeframe. They'll probably go through that, that process of undergrounding utilities. And as soon as they are done, we'll be following up with, with our final project. So just letting you know, our design, we are proceeding with the full design. So, so that the design will be complete. It's just, I would call this as an interim phase, so we have a better quality of roadway over the next two to three years while we wait for Edison to finish their work.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for bringing your team here tonight.
Okay, thank you, I have no questions. And now I'll have some comments when we come to a motion. We'll open the public comment, and I believe Anna-Miss McConnell wanted to speak to this item, so.
Cynthia McDonald, you may now say your public comment.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. While the CIP budget has some funds for active transportation, more funds are needed so the city can comply with the active transportation plan. The Active Transportation- The Active Transportation Plan was adopted in June 2018, and its goals, policies, and objectives were subsequently incorporated into the circulation element of the general plan. Section 7 of the ATP is the implementation strategy for the active transportation projects proposed in the ATP. In the four years since the adoption of the ATP, only about three miles of the 53.12 miles of improvements in the ATP have been completed. Compared to the 20 centerline miles of roadway improvements that were done by the city last year alone, that's a drop in the bucket. As you heard, there are many more projects that are ready to be constructed if only the funds become available. But my frustration mounts when I hear funds aren't available to complete a project and that it will have to be done in piecemeal fashion. Or perhaps it won't be done at all because councils change, commissions change, and balls get dropped. Those who use active transportation have been waiting a long time to be able to walk and ride safely in the city. How much longer must we wait? I'll tell you what doesn't wait: death and injury. In 2019, out of 59 cities of similar size, the California Office of Traffic Safety ranked Costa Mesa 9 in the number of cycling deaths and injuries. One is the worst. So that's 50 cities that did better than Costa Mesa and only eight that did worse. That was pre-pandemic, before cycling exploded as a form of recreation and transportation across the U.S. Goal C8 of the general plan is to create a safer place to walk and ride a bicycle. If we aren't funding projects to make that happen, then we aren't complying with our general plan. We have another Bike to School Day this Wednesday. Let's make our city safe for kids to walk and bike to school. I ask that you request that the City Council direct more funding to active transportation infrastructure so the goals of the ATP can be achieved. And roadway maintenance, yep, it's a vicious circle. I'll let Commissioner Toller speak more on that. Smooth roadways are really great for cars, but they do nothing to reduce the stress of cyclists. Thank you.
Thank you. Any member of the public wish to speak to this item? Please come forward. Yes, sir. If we could have your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, everyone. So I just wanted to comment on the, you know, the capital improvement projects and everything that was mentioned. So I guess, you know, I was at the council meeting on last Tuesday. But in hearing the elaboration on Adams, I guess I'm still like a little bit confused as a member of the public. If, I mean, I've driven on Adams. I don't know about you all. And I, I mean, it's not like the best road we have in Costa Mesa for sure. But to me, I don't really understand the purpose of expediting kind of this interim process right now when we could wait two years, which in the grand stream of a roadway doesn't seem that long. I'm not a city engineer. I don't know if that's true. So I guess like that's kind of one of the strong towns' principles that I guess I'm thinking about when it comes to Adams. Because, yeah, I don't know, like in my university, there was a road that was very poorly maintained. But that was an intentional choice by the chancellor because it slowed cars down. And, yeah, and it wasn't money that the chancellor had to waste on roadways that they could actually put into public education instead. And so I think that's one comment there. Overall, though, I think the CIP is really well done, and I want to really congratulate staff. I mean, I think I'm excited about every one of the projects, and I'm excited about the active transportation projects as well. My only additional note as well that I didn't get to mention at the council meeting is that for the amount of volume that Wilson Street gets, I worry about the slip lane that's on Wilson and Newport Boulevard. I bike, in that area, I have to bike on the sidewalk when I get back home from work. And it just doesn't seem necessary to have that slip lane for the injury rate of slip lanes that we have in Costa Mesa. So I would just like encourage the examination of that, not necessarily in this project, but in future projects as we look at Wilson. And, yeah, and I think that was actually something that disappointed me in the pedestrian master plan, is that we didn't take a look at slip lanes a little bit more. And I think we should do that on areas where the volume is low enough. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the chambers tonight wish to speak to this item? Okay, Anna, do we have anybody on Zoom or telephone?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
I'll close the public comment and bring it back. I think as Commissioner Zick correctly pointed out, and I appreciate Ms. McDonald's work she's done on the committee and her passion for active transportation, particularly the bike lanes. And I've noticed them big time. They're rolling out. I'm sure they're not rolling out fast enough for some people. I would ask Mr. Seth Raman, the $35 million over the next however many years that Commissioner Toller pointed out, is any of that money available, since it's street improvement, any of that money available for bikeway improvements in the street?
So, Chadia, as I mentioned, we are going to allocate quite a bit of that money also for bike and roadway improvements. So when we improve a roadway, it doesn't mean just we improve the roadway. We improve the sidewalks, and we improve the bike lanes that are out there. If there is a bike lane, we want to look at widening the bike lane or having buffered bike lanes. If there are no bike lanes, we look at how we can add a bike lane. So we look for opportunities to improve agro-transportation in every single project. And I must point out, you know, I appreciate the work of Agro-Transportation Committee in bringing this to the limelight and in working with us on many of these projects. You know, similarly, you know, energy and sustainability. I think Council made a priority when they appointed a new energy sustainability manager for our staff. And we are looking at every project even on that lens too. So how can it be more sustainable? So agro-transportation is one of the items that will be part of our every project.
Okay, thank you, sir, very much. I figured, yeah, I figured the short answer was yes, but I agree with you. I think we're doing everything we can, and we're probably doing it as fast as we can. So I'm looking forward to having the network roll out, those 53 miles roll out. So with that, I'm going to make a motion to adopt a resolution to find that the city's proposed capital improvement program is in conformance with the 2015 through 2035 general plan. Is there a second? Please hit your second button if there is. It is seconded by Vice Chair Zick. Any comments on the motion? Commissioner Rojas, any?
No, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Toller.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
First, I just want to shout out an appreciation to Ms. McDonald and all her work. I think this is a hard, this is a big ship to steer. Obviously, we can't just start spinning the wheel and towards one direction. But I'm very grateful for her work and people like her who keep putting pressure on to keep moving forward. I think we're leaving a lot of Orange County cities in the dust. We're doing a lot more than a lot of, man, we're leading the country in some ways, right? When you look at city by city, who's rolling these things out? And I heartily believe it's the right thing to do. I feel with her that it would be great if we could just implement this thing. We passed the Active Transportation Plan seven years ago now. But I also have so much respect for all the work that staff is doing. And I see, I see stuff going up all over the place. I hope in the future we can help start to connect those active transportation links. I hope that we can react to the size of cars. The cars are changing, and I hope that we can start adapting our infrastructure to that. Big SUVs are crawling all over our city, and their windows are tinted, they're sealed off sound-wise. They accelerate faster than they used to. I think the new Teslas go zero to 60 in three seconds. Terrifying when you're trying to cross the street. It's, you can't, it's, I tell my kids to watch out for those when we cross the street going to school, honestly. So watch out for those, those sneak up on you. So I hope that we can, you know, everything's changing real quick, and I really appreciate how staff, what staff has been doing. And I want to echo Ms. McDonald's enthusiasm and passion to keep moving. The question we have tonight, like Vice Chair Zick said, this isn't a project. This is, this is a plan. And what we're asked to do is judge consistency between the general plan and this. And obviously, I'm not focusing on the facilities, and the parks, great. I don't, I don't have anything to say. I think we're doing what we're supposed to be doing and keeping up all those facilities. Streets is a little messier. That's, I think there's a lot of discretion and leeway there for us to make decisions based on the direction that we find in the general plan. And so one of the most concrete things that I find, and what Ms. McDonald pointed to, is the Active Transportation Plan that was incorporated into the circulation element. If anybody has that in front of them, page 51, policy number nine of goal number one, it says to pursue the following mode-split goals: 50% motor vehicles, 10% transit, 10% bicycle, 20% walking, 10% car share, Uber and taxis and stuff. That's a, that's a big one, right? And as we grow, we're going through something, right, with this new housing element, this is going to be more and more and more important. You ask the average person on the street what they think about more apartments, more housing coming into the city. And a lot of people will have a knee-jerk reaction. And you press them on it, and they're going to say, "Traffic. We don't want more traffic. More people means more cars." But if you keep pressing them on that, it gets hard to defend that because it isn't a coherent, it isn't a coherent point of view. It's easy to get painted into a corner because more people doesn't have to mean more cars. It's a policy choice. And it's wrapped up in everything we're talking about right now. Recommendation number 10 of goal number one in the Active Transportation Plan: 30% of all trips under three miles to be by bike, 30% of all trips under one mile on foot. Now, we're doing a lot to facilitate that, and I think that's a good thing. I hope that we don't outpace that investment with investments that make driving easier because they're incompatible at the end of the day. If we make driving easier, if we encourage more volume and more speed, if we make that easier, it's a zero-sum game. It's going to be less, our streets are going to be less pleasant and comfortable and safe to walk and ride on. So we can't have it both ways. Lastly, just one comment. This isn't in response to anybody's comment tonight, but I know it's in the air. The average person reading this might gasp at $3 million this year in active transportation funds. But really, this money, it's not expensive to make walking possible. It's not inherently expensive to make it possible to ride a bike. But it is expensive to readapt spaces that have been designed for cars to also accommodate humans on wheels and bikes. So it's kind of deceptive at first glance to see, oh, $3 million to make, you know, to advance this active transportation agenda. No. In the last 100 years, we've totally reconceived what a street is. We've paved the way for easy driving, and that's come at the expense of simple things like walking and riding your bike to school, to work, to get here tonight. And what we're doing is we're undoing some of that damage. We're just, like, you think of a hawk signal. Is that a pedestrian facility? Yeah, in some ways. But it's just because it's so uncomfortable to cross the street. It's really a car infrastructure masquerading as pedestrian infrastructure. And you could go down the line and identify a lot of those. So anyway, I think we're doing great. Thank you, guys, for all this. Those are all my comments, and I am in support of the motion.
Okay, Commissioner Russell.
Yeah, I just have a couple of comments. As always, the staff's done a really great job of the presentation and the work that's being done. It's exciting to walk, to ride my bike and to walk around and see that active transportation is moving forward. I just, it's not in the plan for five years, and I just want to keep hammering people on it, that the distance between where the Victoria Bike Path ends and down to the river is used a lot by pedestrians and bikers. And it's a challenging piece of road to navigate. So I would hope that, if not in the five years, sometime that we look at how to make that an easier path. That being said, I was, I do have an interest in parks, and I was really happy to see that money's being set aside to create some butterfly habitats. And I'm looking forward to seeing where those are going to be put. It's a very, it's a small piece of action that we can take that will, you know, help the bees and help the butterflies and the chain of life. So that's, that was exciting for me. So thank you. Those are all my comments. I'm obviously in support of the motion.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Russell, Vice Chair Zick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'll be supporting the motion. You know, every project on this list has a constituency of residents that want to see it done. Otherwise, project probably wouldn't be on the list. And you've got a job responsibility that includes, above all, public safety, the safety of the infrastructure, serviceability of the infrastructure. That's why you do condition assessment and respond to that by putting together things like capital improvement plans. The prioritization of these projects, that's not what we're about here tonight. It's not what we're about any night. That's really a council policy, and that's their job to work with you on that. I probably have my pet projects as other people are expressing some interests in theirs. But again, that's not why we're here tonight. I appreciate that you've come here, though, prepared to discuss every and all project that you're working on. We're here simply to talk about is this capital improvement plan in conformance with our general plan. And I think staff has done an excellent job, starting on page three of our staff report, identifying very specifically each category of capital projects and how they tie directly to the general plan policy. And so it's abundantly clear to me that this plan is in general plan conformity, which is why I support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Vivar, do you have any comments on the motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just some quick comments. Again, I want to echo everybody else on the commission who's been expressing their appreciation for staff's hard work on this. I too want to add my appreciation to that. I think staff has done a great job in sort of balancing different needs of, as Vice Chairman Zick said, the different constituencies in the city and making sure that we are able to work towards the plans and policies and objectives of the general plan, including the active transportation. And I want to thank as well those who gave their public comments, Mark and Cynthia McDonald for her comments as well. So I actually served on the stakeholder working group for the Local Road Safety Plan, which Jennifer Rosales so kindly invited me to serve on. And one of the things that stuck with me from that sort of exercise there was that, for whatever reason, just traffic-related deaths have been dropping in the city in the last couple of years. I don't know what that exactly is attributed to, but I'm sure that some of that must be attributed to the city's efforts and bike infrastructure and active transportation. And I'd love to see in the next five years, whenever the Local Road Safety Plan or traffic safety is revisited, that we may see continuing downtrend of traffic-related fatalities and injuries. So I just want to thank again staff for the dedication to active transportation. As Mr. Rajah Seth Raman pointed out, every street that is worked on will not only have paving done on the, sort of the motorway, but as well on the sidewalks and active transportation infrastructure. I know that Wilson, in the walk audits, many people mentioned that the driveway, that the sidewalks weren't wide enough for a wheelchair, for example, to go through. And so I am sure that the Wilson Project and others will make sure that... And so, I, I, I am sure that the Wilson project and others will make sure that access for wheelchairs and pedestrians and those, those who can't drive or even bike also have access to our city streets and are able to get through them in a safe way. So again, I want to thank staff for their very thorough presentation and for, I think, very effectively arguing that this is in fact in conformance with the general plan policies, and I too want to support this motion. That's it for me, Mr. Chairman. I defer back to you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make one comment on one project, because I've been living with it for 14 years on various commissions that I've been on, and that, that is Teewinkle Park, which is, in my mind, like owning a boat. It's just an ongoing expense, and it, it keeps getting worse, and I, I hope there's a solution at some point where we don't have to pour a million bucks into that thing every three or four or five years. But beyond that, I, I do want to thank staff for the work on the CIP, and I've looked at many, many of these, and this is not only the work you have to do in evaluating projects and prioritizing projects and working with staff and working with the city manager's office and council members, and to come up with a plan that makes a lot of sense and it moves important projects forward in a thoughtful way. But also, I want to acknowledge that this city, you know, for a city that has a mandate every year to spend 5% of its general fund on, on capital assets, the fact that we're exceeding that by $18 million is, is clear evidence of how much the council and the city manager and staff recognize that keeping our infrastructure up, keeping our capital assets up, is important to quality of life in the city. And, and year in and year out, you guys do it every year, and it's one of the reasons Costa Mesa is probably the best city to live in, in Orange County, so I appreciate very much the work you guys do. So with that, I'll ask, we'll call for the question. Please vote.
That motion carries 6-0 with Commissioner Erith absent.
Excellent. Mr. Satharaman and your team, thank you very much for your presentation tonight. Thank you, guys. Okay, so that brings us to public hearing item number one on our agenda. Anna, could you read that into the record, please?
Public hearing item number one, planning application 22-01 for a cannabis distribution facility, Outrageous Ventures LLC at 3505 Cadillac Avenue, Unit O-102. Please note, we have received, we have not received any public comments on this item. This is a call for any ex parte communications.
Commissioner Rojas, any ex parte communications report?
None at this time, sir.
Commissioner Toller?
Nope.
Commissioner Russell?
No.
Vice Chair Zick?
Nope.
Commissioner Vivar?
Nope.
And I have none. Ms. Lee, I'm going to turn it over to you, so you can introduce to us our newest planning team member.
Thank you very much, Chair. It's my pleasure this evening to introduce Gabe Villalobos. He's an assistant planner here with the City of Costa Mesa. He joined our team back in October. This is his first time presenting to this planning commission, although I'm certain it will not be the last. We're very proud to have him on the team. So with that, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Villalobos, welcome. The floor is yours, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Gabe Villalobos. I'm an assistant planner here with the city, and today I'm presenting to you planning application 22-01, which is a request for a conditional use permit to establish a cannabis distribution use in the green zone. Just to provide a bit of background, I'm sure all of you are well acquainted with this, but as of November 2016, voters approved Measure X, which allowed the, the city council to establish regulations for medical cannibal, cannabis uses in the green zone, including manufacturing, packaging, distribution, research, and development laboratories, including testing laboratories. In November 2018, non-medical adult-use cannabis became legal in California under Prop 64. In November 2020, voters approved Measure Q, which allowed the city council to establish regulations for cannabis retail businesses. In June 2021, the city council approved two ordinances to amend the municipal code to regulate legal retail cannabis storefronts and non-storefront uses. Shown here on this slide is a flourish, flow chart outlining the general permitting process for cannabis businesses, beginning with the cannabis business permit application through the issuance of the business license. As part of the cannabis business permit process, the applicant provided a detailed business plan that was evaluated by the city's cannabis consultant, HDL Companies. The business plan described owner's background, proof of capitalization, startup budget, a three-year pro forma, target customers, and day-to-day operations. The business plan contains proprietary details and is now included as an attachment to the staff report or agenda. In addition, the applicant also provided a professionally-prepared security plan. The city's cannabis consultant, HDL Companies, reviewed the proposed security plan and determined that appropriate security measures were included to address the city's requirements as well as state law. A note about state licensing, all cannabis uses in Costa Mesa are required to conform to the state's regulations for cannabis control. The California Code of Regulations include, but are not limited to, licenses, responsibility for acts of employee, of employees, product tracking, security measures and personnel, age verification, notification of theft, loss, or criminal activity, advertising materials and labeling, accidents and emergencies, as well as the destruction of disposable cannabis waste, and license renewal or revocation. Now on to the project itself. The proposed use should be located at 3505 Cadillac Avenue, Unit O-102. The 14-acre property is located in the area known as the Green Zone. This existing development includes a 14 multi-tenant industrial and office buildings, in addition to landscaping and a shared surface parking lot. Unit O-102 is a 2,290-square-foot tenant space located at the southern portion of the property, near the intersection of Cadillac Avenue and Sunflower Avenue. The tenant to the right of the suite is Yummy Karma, which is a manufacturing facility that will be ran in conjunction with this distribution facility. To the left of the project is Project Independence, which is a nonprofit group counseling facility for developmentally-disabled adults, and the unit above the proposed tenant space currently sits vacant. The subject property is Zoned Plan Development Industrial, or PDI, and is surrounded by PDI to the north and Industrial Park, or MP, to the south and east. The application before you this evening is for Outrageous Ventures, a 2,290-square-foot cannabis distribution facility located within an existing industrial building in the Cambridge Park Business Park. The applicants would be obtaining a Type 11 distribution license from the state that would allow for packaging and distribution of cannabis products between licensed retailers, cultivators, and manufacturers, as well as providing storage services to other licensees and the ability to arrange testing for cannabis products on site. The project's scope of work has accounted for each of these functions, and as shown on the slide, has dedicated areas for each specific function of the proposed distribution land use. The applicant's business plan and security plan were successfully evaluated by the city's cannabis consultant, and the owner and operator has successfully passed the required background checks. As a note to the Commissioners, all employees will also be required to pass a background Shown here are some site photos taken during my last visit to the site on April 13th. The first photo shows the front side of the building where the front entrance is located. The building to the left is the current Yummy Karma suite, and obscured by the brick wall is a staircase leading to the second floor that's currently vacant, and just behind that staircase is the tenant space to be used for Outrageous Ventures. No changes are proposed to the exterior of the building as part of this project. The second photo shows the rear of the same building, Building O in Cambridge Park, which is composed of multiple two-story suites attached to each other. The rear secured exit for Outrageous Ventures is shown with the brick wall obscuring the view of the rear exit for Yummy Karma. This portion of the facility shall be under surveillance, under surveillance camera, and as shown in this photo, parking is available directly behind the building. This slide provides a site plan for the project site. As previously mentioned, the site is composed of several multi-tenant industrial buildings. The building in which the project is to be located is one developed to accommodate office spaces. As such, there is no roll-up doors with the path of travel displayed to the parking spaces at the rear of the building. Landscaping, surface parking, as well as a trash enclosure are all existing. Unit 102 features an existing tenant space that is currently used as offices for the adjacent manufacturing facility, Yummy Karma. The proposal for the distribution facility shall include modifications to the existing space, including a lobby or secure check-in area where visitors will be required to check in through, approximately 230 square feet of office space used to support distribution operations, a 263-square-foot quarantine and testing area where new products will be taken into first to await testing by a third-party tester, a 242-square-foot labeling area where product will be prepared for shipping once given a passing grade, and lastly, a 430-square-foot storage area where the finished products will be stored to await purchase orders to be fulfilled by the distribution team and prepared for pickup by a third-party The slide shown here breaks down the distribution process as proposed by, as proposed by Outrageous Ventures. The majority of the products taken in for distribution shall come from next door. That would be the Yummy Karma manufacturing facility. The products will be brought over in a secured container, and the path of travel will be under camera. The distance between the secured entrances of either facility is less than 10 feet, and each batch will be monitored and escorted to ensure maximum security. Product batches will be tested to ensure compliance with all state laws. Each batch will be tested by a third-party to ensure integrity of the results. Those batches which do not pass may either be remediated and retested or destroyed if not passing. Those products which are able to move on will then be packaged in-house, as well as labeled, including the information showing the grades received when tested. Outrageous Ventures will only fulfill purchase orders entered by a third-party distributor. The company will pick up the orders and determine the licensed retailers in which they will ship to. The transfer of products will always be secured and handled to the greatest extent to ensure safety and compliance with all state and local laws. So the next couple of slides will provide some examples of conditions of approval that are recommended in the draft resolution. Each of these are related to cannabis-related projects, specifically distribution. This slide provides examples of general conditions of approval, including the approval of being able to be revoked, a cannabis business permit requirement to be renewed every two years, any change in operation requiring city review, as well as updating or modifying the CBP with changes in ownership. This slide provides examples of the state-related conditions of approval, including obtaining required permits prior to any operation, employee age requirements, as well as suspension of state licenses in relation to city approvals. Conditions of approval that are required to be completed prior to the issuance of building permits include plans repaired by a California licensed architect or engineer, a submittal of an odor control plan, equipment. That plan would include any equipment specification sheets, in addition to the screening of any proposed mechanical equipment, and of course, compliance with building, fire, and other Prior to the city issuing a cannabis business permit, some of the items that would need to be completed include providing a matrix demonstrating compliance with all of the conditions previously stated, a requirement for a final planning inspection, signage regarding smoking and consuming cannabis on the premises being prohibited, in addition to providing a sign that states no loitering within 50 feet of the premises, and a $1 million liability insurance. And lastly, on to the operational conditions of approval. Some of these will include a background check and issuance of ID badges for all employees, quarterly employee rosters, as well as vehicle lists, vehicle loading/unloading requirements to be within camera view, no cannabis or cannabis project, products may be displayed from the exterior or visible from the exterior. Cannabis waste, of course, must be made unusable and disposed of at an appropriate facility, and maintaining air quality odor control devices, in addition to the distribution hours, which cannot occur within midnight and 5:00 a.m. Required findings for the conditional use permit application include the proposal be, the proposed use being substantially compatible with developments in the same general area, the proposed use not being materially detrimental to the health, safety, and general welfare of the public or otherwise injurious to property or improvements within the immediate neighborhood, and not allowing a use density or intensity that's not in accordance with the general plan. Based on the analysis and findings in the report and resolution, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution to find that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act per sequel guidelines, Section 15301, existing facilities, and to approve planning application 22-01, subject to the conditions of approval, including state requirements. That concludes my presentation, and staff is available for any questions.
Mr. Villalobos, thank you very much. Great presentation. Easily a double off the center field wall. Good work. Commissioners, any questions of the staff? Commissioner Rojas?
Yes, thank you very much for that information, and found the report very helpful. I just had two quick questions for you. Regarding the line in the description section where it says, "The applicant proposes to use a third-party distributor," et cetera, I understand the general concept of what we're doing, but do we have any details, a little bit more on specifically who they're using or how they plan on using them?
So I would defer to the applicants to let us know who exactly the third-party vendor was, or, or will be, but what I can say is that I do know, based off of the currently approved facility that's right next door, that they are currently operating, Yummy Karma, they already do have a third-party distributor in place, and I believe the idea is to simply move those, at least the distribution components of that use, over into the facility next door, so they can sort of coordinate that and, and use them, and essentially bring everything in-house.
Beautiful. Thank you. Second question is, when you talk about transportation from one end to another, I understand you said it was 10 feet, but do we know the security that they'd like to have besides camera? Is it, I mean, just curious, what does that process look like for them?
So essentially, on the site plans, there is a secured rear exit, and as I mentioned previously, the facilities are located adjacent to each other, so the path of travel that is technically not within a licensed secured facility will be less than 10 feet. As for the actual process itself, it's essentially going to include workers from the manufacturing facility, not hand-carrying, but bringing over the product in a secured container that they're going to have, so essentially, it's going to go from one secured storage area into a secured container, and then transferred over to the secure quarantine area within the proposed distribution facility. So as far as I'm aware, per the, the security plan that was submitted on behalf of Outrageous Ventures, I don't believe that there is any proposal for any security personnel on-site, but there are several other safety features and implementations that they are using to ensure, to the most part feasible, that, that they are protecting the, the transfer of the product.
Fair enough. Thank you very much. No other questions.
Okay. Commissioner Toller, do you have any questions?
No.
Commissioner Russell?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Vivar?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of questions. So I, thank you for your presentation, by the way. Welcome to the city team. I was curious about the testing, so I, as I understand that, you know, there's a... Uh, I was curious about the testing, so I, uh, as I understand that, you know, there's a adjacent manufacturing site that, uh, will be used by this applicant, so I know that most of the manufacturing sites already have, um, testing, um, going on, onsite. So I'm just curious if we, uh, know whether or not that, um, manufacturing site has testing approved for it, and if, if it does, um, why testing is being initiated at this site as well?
So I think the idea is, uh, simply just to shift it over, um, because the testing would be an allowable use per the state license type 11 for distribution. Um, I think essentially the idea is to bring all of the distribution component of, of the cannabis, I guess, manufacturing process into, into one, one tenant suite. So instead of having to have it located with the manufacturing, it's essentially brought over, placed into quarantine because it's already been manufactured, it's essentially been packaged and is ready for, for product testing and ultimately to be, uh, packaged together and, and shipped out. So, um, ultimately, I think, um, just to, I guess, accommodate that, to have a larger space for that specifically and maybe to open up, uh, space on the manufacturing side for them.
Jump in, Commissioner Vivar, what I'd like you to do is kind of ask the applicant that question. I think they're going to have a, um, they're going to be running the data of the operation, a better explanation.
Sure. Uh, okay, I have a second question. Um, this one's related to the third-party, um, distribution that, um, sort of along the lines of what, um, Commissioner Rojas, um, asked, uh, at the beginning of this. So I know from a previous uh, presentation that we saw, uh, for an, another, uh, site, um, that would be doing, uh, distribution of cannabis, but I think, uh, it was direct to consumer, uh, consumer. Um, I learned from that one that, um, third-party people are not able to distribute, uh, cannabis to consumer, but, so I'm just curious, um, if in this case, since it is being distributed to, um, retail facilities as opposed to consumers, does that then allow, um, for the company to use, for the applicant to use, um, a third-party uh, delivery service, distribution service?
So I can't necessarily speak to whether or not the, the proposal is to distribute to licensed retailers. If I understand correctly, I know there is a state license, I believe is, uh, type 13, which is specific just for uh, distribution, the actual transport of cannabis goods. But I do believe it needs to be to, uh, other licensed facilities. Um, I guess retailers could be considered one, but I know in the case of this manufacturing facility, it's very specifically for uh, other, other, uh, licensed, uh, other licensed facilities and, and things of that nature.
And I can add a bit onto that as well. Um, it is appropriate and allowable for, um, cannabis distributors to use third-party distribution vendors. Um, when you're talking about direct delivery to consumers, third-party, um, drivers are not allowed of, in that case, but in this case, it's distribution to licensed retail, licensed facilities, including licensed retailers. That's the difference between the two.
Commissioner Vivar, it's essentially wholesale distribution versus delivery to, constructively to the customer.
Sure, yeah, thanks for the, um, uh, clarification there and for pointing out the differences, um, as I wasn't aware of that. Um, and so just as the, um, employees of, of the uh, facility would all require to go through live scan, uh, checks and, uh, drivers of, um, other retail, uh, like cannabis distribution, but direct to consumer also have to have, um, city-issued badges. So in this case, would the third-party, um, employees of the company, uh, the third, third-party company being hired out to do this work, uh, also be subjected to the live scan tests and would those third-party drivers also need to have a city-issued ID on them at all times?
Commissioner, I can answer that. Um, the city would not require, uh, third-party distributors to have a background check that was completed by the city and to have a city-issued ID badge. However, um, they are subject to state licenses, the same as any other state licensed distributor would be. And so they would need to comply with all of those regulations and laws necessary under those regulations.
All right, thank you. That's it for me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Vice Chair Zick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Villalobos, excellent presentation. I'd call it a home run.
All right. I didn't want him to get too heady, but. All right, how about a ground rule, Doodle? It bounced and went over the wall, right?
So I guess I've got a question similar to the, kind of the questions that have been asked and, and you may, uh, also ask me to direct them to the applicant, but let me kind of formulate the question that I have on my mind. And we've dealt with these type 11 licenses before, but I guess the detail of how they operate is something I've not paid, um, particular attention to, but, but it's kind of raised here. And how it was raised in my mind was from the, uh, attachment to letter from, uh, the applicant, where they say that they will continue to work with a third-party licensed distribution companies to transport and deliver products to stores. And that kind of raised a question because store sounds like retail. Third-party delivery to retail, sounds like that's an issue, so I might want some clarification from staff if I'm misinterpreting that. But it goes on to say, "At this time, we do not have plans to acquire any transport vehicles." And so what that, what that just kind of said to me is, well then, why in the world are you getting into distribution license if you're not planning to distribute? And you're going to keep using third-party distribution companies? But then, as you were, uh, responding to, um, one of the other questions, you were talking about the transportation of the material from the one location across the parking lot to the other. And I wondered if the, that movement is only allowed to occur by a type 11 distributor. And so this allows them to do it themselves as opposed to have to use a third-party distributor. So I'm not understanding, I guess, the concept of operations and why this type 11 license is required, why the CUP is requested when they plan to continue using their third-party distributors and not have any vehicles. So I don't understand that. If you can help me, great. Otherwise, maybe the applicant will have to help me.
So I would more than likely defer to the applicant to, I guess, kind of elaborate on this, but based off of my understanding, the idea was to bring some of the other facets of the cannabis business in-house. So I know a big portion of it was actual packaging and branding of the, uh, of the cannabis products that are ultimately going to be distributed. Um, as I mentioned previously, the majority of the product is coming from right next door, from the Yummy Karma facility. It's predominantly, uh, tinctures as well as lotions, so basically, uh, processed goods. It's not raw cannabis material as you would envision it would be. So, um, a lot of that comes with just the, uh, the packaging of it, as well as, um, arranging the testing, as well as the distribution of it. And, um, from what I've been told based off of previous conversations, the, the idea is to, um, to start to bring things in-house with the potential capability of sometime down the line, being able to take over the distribution component completely and, and sort of incorporate that, uh, at a later date, um, to have their own delivery drivers as well. Um, it, at currently where the company is, they, uh, they're comfortable with having the third-party distributor handle all of that. Uh, it's essentially just, um, uh, fulfilling purchase orders. So, um, it kind of defers having to, um, have the, the appropriate, uh, employees as well as, um, adhering to those specific state laws as far as requirements for the actual delivery vehicle and maintaining the shipping manifest and all of that. So it may potentially come at a later time, but currently, um, it's just, uh, you know, uh, the first step towards ultimately kind of bringing everything all under one house, so to speak.
And I can add a bit more, um, just to your specific question as to why the conditional use permit is required. Essentially, the conditional use permit runs with the land and these are individually-owned industrial condominiums. And so it's necessary to have a standalone conditional use permit that's tied to the specific property, uh, for distribution. And the last point I'll make is, uh, that the, it, it is always allowable for licensed distributors to deliver to licensed retailers. Um, what's not allowable is third-party distributors to deliver to cannabis consumers directly through a delivery license.
Thank you, thank you for that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we'll open the public hearing and ask the applicant to come forward if they have a presentation. Yes, ma'am, good evening.
Good evening.
Have you read the, uh, have you read the staff report?
Yes, we have.
The findings and the conditions of approval, and do you agree with the conditions of approval?
Yes, absolutely.
Very good, for yours.
And I would like to just clear up a few of your questions right away. Just so you know, it's been four years, I think, since, since last time I stood up here in front of planning, so I'm pretty sure most people are new. Our company is pretty much well-known as Yummy Karma in Costa Mesa and my sister co-owns it with me. And I also have a couple of people from my staff. Um, so we're very excited to be in front of you and to explain our expansion goals. We also have, uh, another brand we just threw up there so you can get familiar with it, which is High Gorgeous, which you might now see our corporate headquarters in Newport, above Louis on the Bay. So we're trying to normalize cannabis as much as possible. All right, next slide. So to catch you up, um, fun fact, versus drone. So we're the first licensed manufacturer in Orange County. We were the first licensed manu- the second license that Costa Mesa passed in general, which is fantastic, right? But what we ran into are the problems that you're now addressing. Yes, it is not normal for a manufacturer to hold a license without holding a distribution license as well. The reason why is that the state originally, because we were so early when we were going through licensing, um, the regulations originally said by the state that you couldn't have manufacturing and distribution. This is because distribution was the only place that you could do testing, the final compliance testing. In the mi- in the state's mind at the time, they thought a third-party distributor would be better set up because, you know, you just, it's why, I guess in their mind, it was kind of like a checks and balances, right? Not to have the own manufacturer test their own product. What they found, though, was a lot of problems when you would need to go back and remediate the product or you need to do the final labeling and then pack it. So when we send things for testing, we cannot put it into the final master cases until we get the results back. We know that the product clears, then we could put our final label, our distributor we've been using for years, put the ugliest label on, and we're a team of a lot of women and a couple of men now, but we like to put beautiful labels on our packaging. Therefore, taking this in-house, it has a huge effect for us. Right now, I had to pay my distributor 10% more to do these operations, to have the lab come in, to test it, to label it, to pack it, um, to get it ready for final sell. And, uh, it's just like, most distributors are like, what do you mean? You don't have a distribution license? So we were so far into our build-out, it was too late to go back and to add the license because you have to have certain stipulations by the state, such as a hallway that separates your distribution facility or your distribution area from your manufacturing. We couldn't do that with the space that we had already designed. We wanted to still be first to the market, so therefore we went forward and we decided we had a good deal with our current distributor, we'll add the distribution license later. And now, four years later, here we are, proudly saying that we've been operating, um, since 2018. We've grown and we think it's also because of the support of the city, which we were part of the initiative that lowered the tax rate from 6% to 1%, which has allowed us to dramatically grow. This year alone, or in the last 12 months, I believe we've hired eight people. So, and we're set to open, when we open, to hire more. Um, a lot of people have even relocated to Costa Mesa for us to do this. Three of us here tonight have even bought homes in the last couple of years because of this. So, in Costa Mesa, of course. Um, so now we're top three third, we're top in our tincture market. Um, so we're the third brand now as of last month. Very excited. Um, we are currently distributed by a publicly traded company, but they were initially sold distro, which is right down the street from us on, not Sunflower, but Cadillac, sorry. Um, so they were purchased and then purch- and then put into a SPAC, so now they're a publicly traded company. But we have been working with the same, essentially, group that has just grown for five years now. So it is the same. There will be the same people that are picking up. The only difference is, is I no longer have to pay them 10% more. So I get to go from 25% down to 15%. It's a cost savings for us to take it in-house, to test it, to label it, to final touch it, to master case it, to then put it, um, ready to sell. They're picking up essentially the same product. It's just tested, labeled, and in a master case now. Um, and I can tell you, it saves us a lot of money. And we've grown to 400 stores. Just a real quick recap, these are some of our products. Just so you could see, sometimes it's hard to visualize. Like you said, we are not dealing with flower at this point. We, all of our products are in this form when they leave the manufacturing facility. They are typically boxed and put on a dolly that we usually roll out to the distributor's truck. However, I know that there's been reviews over concerns with safety, so we have already submitted that we will be switching over instead of an open dolly, it's a caged one. And we have, um, submitted the actual example of what it is. So it'll be locked, put in something locked, rolled over through the door, it takes about five seconds, and then unlocked again when it's back inside. Um, and then the next slide is just also our female brand, so, you know, very simple products. And then lastly, just to show you a picture, this is what we're doing right here. We're just adding the distribution license, um, like we said, for testing. All testing is ran and, uh, we have to conform to the state. State is very strict on that, so we use metric and, uh, the only main difference is now the lab will just be coming to our facility instead of going to our distributors, the final packing into our master cases. And then final step is the housing and the storage. At this time, we continue to, our intent is to continue to work with our distributor. We're in contract with them. Um, however, our hands have always been tied because with the way testing is, you have to submit the entire batch. So if we want to make 3,000 units, because testing is very expensive these days, we pay about $480 per batch. So obviously, you don't want to make small batches. That has actually tied our hands for me being able to use multiple third parties. Um, so we've been stuck using one because if not, if I want to use five, I have to make five batches and pay the testing five times. So this also is just a business, common sense thing for us to be able to sell a certain amount to our distributor that they order. But if another distributor comes in and makes an offer to cover a different territory for a different uh, percentage, then it allows us to make those decisions. So it gives us a lot of autonomy, which we desperately need at this point. Um, as Gabriel said, and thank you, Gabriel, you did a wonderful job. Um, we don't intend, right now, we are a small team of only 20 people and as much as I would love to buy the trucks and deliver to everything myself, because I think our team is a rock star, I think we're rock stars, I think that we would kick butt, um, we are not in that financial position to go that big. So this is just our first step to being able to be more autonomous, and I really hope our distributor does not watch this. So basically, that's it. And I did include the slides because I know there's been a lot of questions about the path of travel. If you don't mind going to the next one. So this just shows again, right here, this little green arrow, I don't know if you can see it, but, um, on how quickly it is moved from our limited accessory of our pickup room and then directly into quarantine. And the reason why also is, you, as you can see, the space for quarantine is quite large. That's something we could not accommodate on the other side. Um, this has, the product has to be moved in there and held and marked until the lab comes, then marked again to show that it's being waited, and not until it clears can it leave that space. It's an extra-secure locked space, so that way it cannot ever get confused with anything that has already passed testing. Um, and then finally, on the last side, you can see just, it's the same way we've been doing it. When they come to pick it up, they just pull up. It's scheduled, it's never at the same time of the day. We're very aware of, uh, being safe and making sure all eyes out. We, everyone checks the cameras first and, um, we haven't had any issues yet, so. We, everyone checks the cameras first, and we haven't had any issues yet, so. That pretty much concludes what I have. If there's any more questions, though, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
All right. Thank you very much for your presentation. Commissioner Vivar, do you have questions of the applicant?
Thank you so much for the presentation. Very, yeah, very informative. Just have a couple questions, so I, and I appreciate you touching on the testing. So if I'm understanding this correctly, you, as it stands currently, you do not have any testing onsite. It goes offsite, correct?
Currently, the only testing that takes place in manufacturing is our R&amp;D testing, where the lab will come to pick up to test our, for example, our resource material when we create, I don't want to get too complicated with stuff with distillate, but we do test material when it comes in, just to make sure we understand what the potency is, make sure that it's clean, because the last thing you want to do is put that into thousands of little bottles and then have to throw them away. So we do R&amp;D testing, but currently the state does not allow for us to do the compliance testing that has to happen before it can reach retail.
And then, so the proposal here is to have the third-party lab come and do the testing in this space that you're seeking this CUP for?
That is correct. The way it works is you typically set up a test 24 to 48 hours in advance, the lab comes, everything is documented on video, they have to film it, and it has to be clear that there's no indication from any team member to point to, like, oh, don't pick from that batch or that box. So the whole thing is, it takes about, I think, about an hour per SKU. This will be something new that we'll also be learning, but the labs are the ones that are carrying out the entire process of compliance, so we would rely on them.
And then so the offices that you currently have there, you said you're moving to Newport Beach, so that'll clear up.
We already did.
Oh, okay. Okay, yeah. I was just curious where the rest of the office space was going that you had at the site.
We, we are keeping my Director of Ops right there, and we also have new positions that we'll be filling, mostly with people that have already, that are already on our team. We believe in promoting people from within.
Sure.
So we will have someone that, you know, manages metric and transfers and the labs. So when the lab comes in, there's no testing onsite, it's just picking. So say we do 3,000 tinctures, they come in, the state will require, I believe it's 18 samples for that size batch. So they come in and they randomly choose those 18, fill out the paperwork, and they take those back to the laboratory to then be tested, and it takes about three to five days, when you're lucky, to get the results back.
Okay, cool. And have you guys hired anyone from Costa Mesa?
We have.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, no, we are very big fans of Costa Mesa. I, I'll be honest, I'm from Fresno. When I moved here, I moved right to Newport Beach. I don't think I'd ever heard of Costa Mesa, but I, I absolutely love it. I was able to buy a place a couple of years ago, along with my sister and one of others. But yes, we always try to hire from within. We are pretty involved with our community, Chamber of Commerce, different projects that come up, so we're not going anywhere.
Yeah.
We feel like you guys have been amazing partners for us.
Yeah, because oftentimes the language that has, you know, the conditions of approval and whatnot, it, you know, it often says, hey, you know, we should have Costa Mesa, you know, opportunities for Costa Mesa residents, you know, employment and whatnot. So it's kind of interesting to sort of ask applicants how that's kind of, you know, going for them, but yeah.
Right. I think I'm, we're personally responsible for six people relocating to Costa Mesa, three as homeowners, and we actually have two employees that currently do not live in Costa Mesa that, as this opens up, because they're taking larger positions in the company, they are relocating to Costa Mesa. So those roads are going to get real busy. I'm just kidding.
And so I appreciate you touching on as well on the safety for the vehicle loading. So is that, is that currently hidden from view somehow, behind the wall or something like that?
So we're fortunate where we're at. We have a pretty good eye on the area. There's a lot of us in the green zone, and we haven't had any incidents as of yet, but I will say that there is discussion amongst a lot of operators to, since there's so many of us now, to approach the idea of, you know, pitching in and everyone doing some kind of 24-hour security. But there hasn't been, we didn't have any incidents even during the last couple of years. LA had a lot of them. We were fortunate down here. Safety is a huge one for us. If I, if I thought there was a concern, trust me, but the way our cameras are set up, we also have videos, so you can see at the door prior to exiting the building, and you cannot see in the building. So you would not know when that door is opening, because it's completely blacked out. So if someone was to be in the area, we wouldn't open the door, and by the time they could leave a vehicle, like, we have a good view of around the entire building, because you saw how our building is positioned. It's, it's a corner building, so our cameras go all the way around it, giving us plenty of time. We have had suspicious activity, and we've always then called the cops.
Okay, great. I guess one last question. It's probably a simple one, but I was reading in the text that part of your project would include expanding the plumbing and electrical fixtures, so I'm just curious, like, is, what is the need for that and for the, you know, the partition walls, demolition, with, you know, being moved around, I guess? So is that, is the water, the need for water for the testing?
So currently, the back entrance where we're going to be doing, exiting with the product, is where the bathrooms are and the sink. And so we are running the line, we're leaving the bathroom, but we're running the line for the sink to create a much more beautiful area for people to eat and relax in and enjoy. So we're just running that line through so that we can create a new kitchen area, basically, for the, for employees.
Okay, yeah. I was just curious about that. All right. Thank you so much for your presentation and for answering my questions. And, Mr. Chairman, I'll defer back to you. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Rojas, questions? Commissioner, Commissioner Toller?
Nope.
Commissioner Russell?
No.
Okay. Vice Chair Zick?
I just wanted to say thank you for answering my questions very straightforward. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Absolutely. I've been doing this for a really long time, so.
Sounds like borderline too long.
You know, we.
All right, that's fine. No, 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 that's, all right. So thank you very much for your presentation. I have no questions. We'll open the public hearing up to the public comment portion. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak to this item, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, anyone on Zoom or telephone?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much, ma'am. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion, well, actually, Commissioner Vivar, you beat me to it. Go ahead, sir, and state your motion.
Yeah, oh, yeah, just wanted, there's specific tech language I have to say right for this, but I want to move to approve application number P dash, what's the number?
2201, application 2201.
2201.
2201, yeah. Yeah, just great, yeah, great presentation. Thank you for all the business and everything you're bringing to the city, for collaborating with our public safety as well, and wish you the best of luck.
Okay, and I will just hop on Commissioner Vivar and just ask you to reiterate that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of SEQA, Per SEQA Guidelines, Section 15, 301, Class 1 Existing Facilities, and that the approval for planning application 2201 is subject to conditions of approval in Exhibit B. Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay, we've got a second by Commissioner Russell. Any comments on that motion, Commissioner?
I'm just happy to see a woman run organization moving forward in Costa Mesa. Go on, good go.
All right. Anyone else wish to speak to the motion? Okay, seeing none, we'll call for the question. Use vote.
That motion carries 6-0 with Commissioner Erich absent.
Okay, and that, that decision becomes final in seven days unless appealed to the City Council. Good work, ladies and gents. Good luck. You're welcome. Have a good night. Okay, that wraps up our public hearing agenda. We have no old business nor new business on the agenda tonight, so that moves us to departmental reports. Public Services, Mr. Yang.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Planning Commission, it's my pleasure to give the Public Services report. So Public Services and Costa Mesa Police Department, the Newport Mesa Unified School District, participating in the National Bike Day as part of the Larger Bike Month on Wednesday, May 4th and 11th are designated as National Bike School Days. The events are designed to provide an opportunity for students and parents to become comfortable and familiar with riding a bike to school, and also reduce congestion in school pickup and drop-off times by encouraging students to ride to school regularly instead of being transported by car, and also to encourage a shift to more and more sustainable modes of transportation for future generations of Costa Mesa residents. So the Public Services Department coordinated with Costa Mesa PD and the Newport Mesa Unified School District to bring the national event to the city. On Wednesday, May 4th, approximately 950 students, faculty, and parents participated in a fun-filled event at six elementary schools, which consisted of Kaiser, Sonora, Woodland, Whittier, Pomona, and Rea. On Wednesday, May 11th, three additional elementary schools will be hosting events at the city, Polerino, Wilson, and California. Surprises and educational materials will be provided by the city and also by volunteers. So the second part of the report will be the Fairview Road Bridge opening at the I-405 freeway. This Thursday, May 12th, at around 5:00 a.m., the Fairview Road Bridge will open to all motorists. So the bridge was built in two phases to allow traffic throughout the course of construction. First half of the bridge, which was Phase 1, was demolished on March 2019, and the second half of the bridge demolition, which was Phase 2, was demolished in February of 2021. So during the course of construction, precast girders were, have been installed to support the new structure, and bridge deck was poured. So the bridge is now 15 feet wider and a foot higher than the previous bridge. So again, the Fairview Road Bridge is set to open this Thursday. So that completes my report, and I'll defer back to the chair.
Thank you. I, I just want to, as a side note, I'm watching the flyover for the 73 to the 405 being built, and watching those guys, it's like they're trying to build a 747 in a broom closet. It's just fascinating to me, so hats off to those guys. Development Services report.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to announce that staff does intend to cancel our May 23rd Planning Commission meeting. You might be aware that your staff and city leadership are attending the ICSE gathering, which is Innovating Commerce and Serving Communities Gathering, which is essentially an event where local government leaders, as well as industry representatives and market experts get together each year and talk about the business needs and economic development market of local cities. So we'll be doing that on May 23rd, and we will be happy to see you at our June 13th meeting. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. City Attorney report?
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. No report this evening.
Okay, then we'll stand in adjournment to our regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting now on June 13th, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. Thank you. Good night.